Sorry. You good to go? And I get to keep going, okay.
Should I push continue?
Yes, please.
Um, so I'm looking forward to, um, I'm gonna let them, because I just joined their first meeting, but they're making some changes in the future. I think it'll be a positive for, for Atchison County. Another thing for the public to understand is in the past two weeks, we've had two workshops with all of our department heads now that the COVID concerns have been subdued a little bit. And it's been great. It's a collaborative team effort, a lot of discussion, a lot of forward thinking, as well as just getting back to kind of that team feel here at the county. So one of the things that we will be doing in the future is our workshops will be more of a workshop setting. They'll still be open to the public, however, not broadcast on, on Zoom for the public. You're definitely welcome to come, but it's just more of an intimate setting for our department heads to kind of work in hand in hand with us. Now, with that being said, I know transparency is a big concern for the public. So that's where the, it'll fall on us three and we'll do, we'll do a great job of conveying kind of what's, where we're at and what's being discussed and bring that over into this public meeting that will remain the same format of that. But some of the feedback from our department heads, they don't, you know, they feel more comfortable talking in a, in a meeting setting without every, every person. And I get that. I mean, I forgot the pledge of allegiance the first time I was on Zoom. So, I mean, I can sympathize with the, with the fear of, of speaking in front of public. So, and then the other thing that I wanted to bring up is obviously we had our joint meeting last Monday. And from that meeting, we walked away with an understanding of the city of Atchison's position to be done with the 1% sales tax, which generates $2.8 million for Atchison County. We actually had the workshop this morning. We touched a little bit on that. And so I just wanted to kind of brief what I learned. And please feel free to correct me if there's anything I say that maybe I misunderstood this morning. But I'm trying to gain an understanding because Dr. Epley had invited me to meet on Friday with the revisers in Topeka to kind of clarify some of the questions that I've had on this situation. So some of the things right now, we proposed our option would be to fund solid waste and joint communications, those two budgets with the sales tax based on the apportionment rate. And then all remaining funds would be apportioned back to those entities according to that. A few of the things that I learned is there's a resolution number 2972 that was enacted or sorry, adopted on December 15th of 2014 by Mayor Dave Butler and City Clerk Deb Clem. And in this, it states that the city of Atchison agrees to pay a uniform tipping fee of $35 per ton on section three and then section four, Atchison County shall not charge the city a tipping fee for any disposition of construction or demolition waste, provided such waste was generated by the demolition of dilapidated structures by the city under its police powers. And again, I'm just speaking for myself, but I do not believe waiving fees for an entity that's not willing to pay what was voted on by the citizens, number one, is okay. And number two is me representing the taxpayers and the voting citizens with the tipping fee. I believe they should be removed in the fact that we're essentially double, doubling up a little bit as far as passing that back to, to the citizens when the budgeted. So for this example, the budgeted fund for those two, sorry, for those two departments, the budgets were 1,975,503. And then the sales tax generates 2.8. So there's plenty of money there to pay for these two services and then apportion back to those entities how they need. And leave that up to them of what their needs are, because everybody has individual needs. One of the things that the only way in my understanding, and again, this is where I probably need some clarification, that we could lose, which I do not want to lose, $2.8 million of sales tax generated by the 1% sales and use tax countywide would be for us as county commissioners to repeal that. And my stance would be I would not be for that. And then the only other option that I learned this morning, and I believe would be for a referendum from the city of Atchison to ask us to put the question on the ballot to repeal the sales tax. And again, I would hope that citizens would not vote for something that would eliminate $2.8 million in Atchison County. Another important point, I think, to bring up from that meeting is that the city of Atchison was not interested in funding solid waste at all. And that's kind of one of those critical services for the public. But the way I look at decisions being made is like, one, you affect people and then others is like an inconvenience. So Stacy, and I'm not saying this is an option that I want to see. I'm just trying to be transparent with the public on discussions of what this may look like since we're not getting the money like we should be based on the sales tax is it would cost $414,000 to close down our solid waste facility in line with state guidance. So I know that would not be what citizens want to see either. We have so many contractors in town that utilize it and citizens. I mean, it's easy to drive right out to the dump right there. And also for the Effingham facility is great for the western portion of the county. But again, these are real conversations and real funding decisions made by these entities. And so we just want as county commission to be as transparent with the public as we can of, you guys got to pay attention, you got to ask questions, you got to hold your commissioners, you got to hold county commissioners, you got to hold city commissioners, you got to ask them and, and hold us all accountable so that we're all working in the best interest of you because you elected us, you're paying the bill. And if we lose $2.8 million of sales tax, you know, somewhere. So that's kind of.
Can I make a comment?
Sorry.
The resolution that was passed Dave Butler's side, I believe that was unilateral that was for agreement. There was no discussion with our solid waste committee. It was just unilateral. So it's a decision was made without any use of the solid committees of the places, the boards that we have employed.
It wasn't approved by the county commission. It was only signed by the city.
So, so do we have authority as of today to not collect tipping fees anymore and not, and not waive dump fees for the city of Atchison? Because in my opinion only is why are we waiving fees for someone who's not paying their part, their apportioned rate? And I don't want to use part in loose language, but, and then also the tipping fee would make sense if the funding wasn't generated, but there's ample funding generated. So why are we paying, why are we having a tipping fee that gets passed to the citizens? It doesn't make sense to me.
Because it left more sales tax available for, since the argument was that the county could not use any of the sales tax except for joint communications and solid waste. In other words, essentially the city's view is that it is a dedicated sales tax for the county, but for all other purposes, for all other entities, it's not treated the same. So they are able to retain portions of it to use in their general use. And that view says the county cannot. So 100% of the sales tax received by the county is required to go in. And there's arguments for and against. There's attorney general's opinions, there's the Gilmore and Bell opinion that the city has hung their hat on for many years. But again, that was a attorney's opinion, law firms' opinion that was bought and paid for by the, the city, I'm assuming hired them for that opinion. So I, I think there are some legal avenues that if we really wanted to press it, we could possibly go down. And that precedent says that would give us authority to spend some of that sales tax money. We've gotten away from that to try to remove that as an obstacle to, to reach a conclusion and, or, you know, make a deal so that, we haven't done that for years, spend any sales tax in our general, but that would enable us to level the playing field if we would go down that avenue.
So, and I guess my thing is I don't like, I don't like the words like make a deal or, or us spend unilaterally, like a lot of people like to say, but I'm just trying to understand. So under the KSA 12-189, excess funds can be utilized. How each entity would need to, and if each entity was paying their apportionment rate, that would leave a remaining balance for Atchison County residents of 421,16441, city of Atchison, 433,12975, city of Effingham, 20,24908, city of Lancaster, 9,01342, city of Muskota, 4,094813, and city of Huron, 2,035590, based on the option we presented last week. And I, this is using 2020 example because we had the full gamut of numbers. So I just, I think it's important that we are educating the citizens on this because at the end of the day, as a county commissioner, $2.8 million, I don't want to gamble with it. I don't want to, I don't want to take the risk of, of losing that. And although maybe some entities are looking at removing it and starting fresh, that's a gamble because who, who's to say that the, the public and the taxpayers will vote it back? And we have it now, it's generating ample amount with an overage. I just want, I just want the public to pay attention.
If that was the avenue that we chose to go down, I would really want to try the repeal and replace option, which would be, if, if we could do it and, and I have it, when I, from information from the revisers board at the state house said that we could. I got that through Representative Epley, that we could do a repeal and replace. So if it did not pass, you would still be left with, you know, you would have to repeal and replace it all at the same time. If it didn't pass, it would stay the same. So I would really be interested in that option.
Could you remind the public how much, without tipping fees, what percentage the city of Atchison is paying for solid waste and joint communication of this sales tax? Are they currently paying 20%?
Um, so I don't have the percentage figured, but I do have the amount in my brain. So in a portion rate of 48.62%, which would equate to 1,393,60440, and we're currently collecting roughly $444,000 and some change.
But that's for joint communication. And solid waste, but it doesn't call, it does, that does not cover their portion of joint communications, correct?
So that's just their apportioned rate. And then the two budgets for solid waste and joint communications on 2020 was 1,975,503. And I think some of the misinterpretation, and this is just my opinion again, is when statements are being said that the county can only use these funds for those to correct when we're being shortchanged and there's not enough money to run them. Like we have to pay for that. But if everyone paid their portion, that would allow the county to have an additional 421,000, the city of Atchison to have 433, like everybody would get a good chunk to say, here, go, go use this how you need it, whether it be roads, streets, alleys, you know, whatever the needs are sewer, clean water. I know Effingham, City of, everybody has different needs.
Apparently the city is keeping 800 and some thousand, 800 of that sales tax. I don't have those figures directly on me, but.
That's so. Local people and people who are not a county.
Right, yeah. The chambers tourism efforts, everything is brought in, which is another plus to have $2.8 million. And there's a, you know, it's being generated by people outside of our county.
I would need to see this on the add to our taxes. And, you know, I think there's letters from George Ross that we had, that was talking about this very issue in 99 or 2000. And he's been gone a long time. And Tom Wagner. So this has been a discussion for a long time, but I think it's going to take, Casey, to your point, citizens to start asking those questions and.
And that's one of the things that I wanted to bring up because I know in our discussions, sorry, I'm trying to find my list right now that I had, but in our discussions, we had talked through, I have it, I'll just pull it up here, that the city of Atchison generates the most sales tax for Atchison County, which is correct, but I think that they forget to take into consideration that county residents are the entrepreneurs that are running those businesses and generating the funds. And at the end of the day, if we lose it and we have to make it up somewhere, these folks might be running a business in the city of Atchison, but they're going to be paying it on the backend at home with property taxes and other fees. And so just a list that I kind of, and this is just, I believe, so I could have one wrong, but Atchison Express Loop, Ayers Auto Parts, Sunsetters, Atchison Auto Parts, Carrigan Lumber, Artist Box, Always Blooming, Core Richards, Van Dyke Grocery, Atchison Outfitters, Atchison Animal Clinic, Jerry's Again, Main Street Decorating, Mr. G's, Thayer Supply, Redline Parts and Service, Baker Services, Blishmize. Those are all city of Atchison businesses owned by county residents. So that's, that's why I'm just saying like, it's such a collaborative effort. It's not us versus them. It's not them versus us, it's us and all of us doing what's right to move us forward to say, hey, we're all in this together and we have to do the best job for the citizens of Atchison County.
Quite frankly, that's a, that's a short list compared to, I started adding on Carney Construction. A lot of construction companies reside outside of city limits to take collect sales tax. And I guess including Marla's. So there's lots of people doing this as a community. And what's best for the community is what we should be doing. And unfortunately, that's not what's happening and hasn't happened for a long time.
And I just think if anyone, any citizen has an idea or a suggestion for us on how we can continue to educate and be transparent with the public, I need to hear it because I don't want it to be too late and the citizens get hit with the bill if we lose this $2.8 million and have to come up with other ways to fund it. And I don't want to see us lose our solid waste facility that's in Atchison County either. That's very convenient for, for the public and, and the businesses.
And there's, there's city commissioners of the long term. I'd reach out to your city commissioners or your county commissioners. Can I say city commissioners jointly, Effingham, Lancaster are also.
Yeah. So, um, other than that, I, that's really all the updates that I've had from the past week.
Okay. You've been a busy, busy commissioner. New business before the board, Harvey Felsky, K Camp, multi-line pool. We're up.
Hello, everybody. Michelle asked me if, if I could attend the meeting to talk about coverage under your current memorandums of coverage regarding your Atchison County Lake Dam. Presently, there is no coverage under the, under your policy or your memorandum of coverage for dam failure. Typically, you know, that's a, a fairly significant hazard that the, that the pool board and, and our reinsurers have said should be purchased elsewhere outside the, outside the pool. But we've relooked at that and we've decided that we can provide dam failure for certain classes of dams. Presently, the Department of Agriculture will, will inspect dams and will classify dams based on, they give a hazard classes. Class A would be a low hazard, class B would be significant hazard and class C would be a high hazard dam. And typically, the, the reasoning for the classification is based on what's downstream from the lake. If the dam fails and there's a significant residential or commercial property downstream from the lake, the, the potential for loss of life and loss of property kind of drives the classification. So K Camp is willing to provide coverage for low hazard and significant hazard dams. After reviewing the Department of Agriculture's inspection, most recent inspection of the dams and depending on, you know, if there are any outstanding recommendations, whether you have an emergency action plan, those types of things. But we wanted to, you know, just kind of bring it to your attention that right now you don't have the coverage. And if you'd like us to underwrite that exposure, we'd be willing to do that. I've, you know, we've, I've reached out to Michelle and asked her to get me copies of the inspection reports. But, you know, really we need to know whether the, the commissioners want to, K Camp to offer the coverage or whether you're comfortable self-insuring that exposure or whether you have coverage somewhere else.
Is there an estimated amount, what that would be?
Typically for a low hazard dam, assuming that it's a, you know, it's an acceptable exposure, it's about a $2,500 flat charge. We would prorate that from now till the end of the year. And then next year would be 2,500 for, for significant hazard dams. Again, assuming that it passes the underwriting process, the, the charge is, is approximately $5,000.
Have you seen the dam in person?
I have not, no. I did, Michelle said that she talked to the Public Works Superintendent and he, and he thinks the dam is in pretty good shape. He said he wasn't sure about the spillway. I have, like I said, I haven't seen it personally and typically what we rely on is the Department of Agriculture's most recent inspection.
I think we should talk about this in workshop with Joe next week.
Yeah, I think we'd need more information. And then this would just be liability of damage caused to failure of the dam, correct?
Right.
Wouldn't be any, then you're not, if it would fail, there's no coverage of the repair.
Of the dam itself? No, that would be a property coverage and, and yeah. Dams are not covered under your property form either.
The lake is so stilted full, I don't hardly see that there'd be enough water to flood much behind it because it is really getting full. But I think we're going to have to add some information from our road and bridge guy.
The dam fails, that sulk flow. And I don't know what that looks like. I'm not, I don't even know why it's not, not obviously a water shed actually, but water always flows somewhere.
Yeah. Yeah, let's, let us talk about it next week and we'll get back.
Okay. All right. Yeah. And my recommendation would be at the very least, reach out to, to the Department of Agriculture and, and see if they've inspected the lake and, and see if you can get a copy of the most recent inspection report.
That sounds good. Okay. Anything else today?
Not for me, I'm good.
Thank you. Joe Snyder, Road and Bridge Superintendent, Grading and Backfilling Bridge, 270 Project.
He's heading down your way. We are going to be doing the opening, the bid opening for the bridge to send the backfilling and grading project. I only received one bid in the office and it is from Wagner Excavating LLC.
Backfilling on, on this bridge 270 from Jeff Wagner, $31,750. And then we also asked them to come up with an importable, imported suitable backfill material price per yard in case there was not enough backfill suitable material to backfill and grade. As price per unit is $12, a yard, cubic yard and removable of unsuitable material would be $8 a square yard. We are concerned about some of the material being set so. Something we need to, to look at.
Something. Yeah, Joe, just out of curiosity, because we only have one bid. Do we have historic, this data, what this usually costs?
No, we just, since I've started, we've just been going off what has cost us on these bridges since I've been there. The data before, I can go back and find like maybe one, one bridge. But the last one we have done was around $20,000. But this one's a lot more entailed because of all the extra work they had to do next week. Around the end.
So it sounds like this was within reason.
Yes, I think it sounds like it's within reason. And I would say probably the material and everything is probably within reason also. But I also want to state, as we spoke earlier, that we're going to reach out to some contractors and see if there's a reason why we're, we're possibly only getting one bid. There's something we need to do to try to make it better for them to get more competition.
So you're going to bring that back to us next week?
Yes.
What else you got for us?
Approval for the language change on the road policies and the, which basically states that the superintendent and road and grid would be responsible for making the decisions. There's a little bit of change on the culverts for entrances specifically stating more specifically what, what we will, what we're expected to, to take care of the size. If it's under 18 inches, that that could be a decision made by me if we don't believe it needs to be. And then the maximum lengths will typically supply a 30 foot tube and less. There's a 26 there, you know, and that works. And then if anybody wants to pay more than, or wants more than 30 foot, if it's okay by me, then they would be responsible for the additional 10 feet with a maximum of 20 feet.
So that would only, they'd only pay for the actual tube price, the extra 10. And. Install, installation.
Yeah, installation. Yeah, installation. And then the, if there's any questions there, I'll try to answer those. The other one to add to the policy is the dust control. But we don't, we don't have as of now and it just explains who's responsible for what. The dates, you know, the, the MS customer must notify road and bridge by first annually of their intent to apply control. All dust control must be approved by the EPA and that's county road superintendent. That's the county will not be responsible for any damage caused by dust control products. That's the law will pay for all dust control products applied to the roads. That's what will be required to play, display appropriate signs at the time of application and a starting and ending points of any intersecting roads between. And we will have a diagram for that. Dust control log sheet form must be turned into the county at least two weeks in advance to application of dust control. And Atchison County will do everything possible not to disturb the product applied to the road bid. If it becomes necessary to maintain the road for any reason, work required to keep the road safe will be done. Atchison County will not be responsible for loss of dust control product due to maintenance. So it pretty well is self-explanatory. And, and I think it's where we need to go because we have these questions. I've had them all week. So then we will attempt to get them sent out to people who have been doing dust control in recent years to also display on our webpage and Facebook.
So that's also, that's like 11?
Estimated around, around 11, but they're scattered all over the county. So there may be a few more or less, but that's, that's where we are there. And then I forgot on the culvert application, we have revised it where it's a lot simpler. We feel for someone going online to fill them out and bring it in. So we just want an approval for those changes in the policy.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve the policy as presented.
What's our move?
Second.
Move and seconded discussion.
Good work.
We're just trying.
Yeah.
All the papers have been filed and said, all right, passes three reserve.
I have a contract with Norfolk Contracting, the old one was for a bridge F.012.4, it's Kansas Local Bridge Improvement Plan. What's a common share for the state of Kansas. In the contract before is stated that we would be in charge of the concrete. And we've, I want that changed where they're, they're in charge if they over, over order or whatever, it's on them, it's not on us, we're not at their discretion. The, taking the bridge out, they're, they'll do the removal. We may have to hold some of the concrete, but they'll do the removal instead of us being responsible for all of it. And the old was 131,377 and this new one is $143,777. 777. Just looking to get that signed and then also a PO for Norfolk Contracting for the 143,777.
I don't have that.
I have it.
Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion to approve order to Norfolk Contracting, Norfolk, Nebraska for $143,777.
Summit.
Second by Commissioner Law, any further discussion? All the papers have been filed and said, all right. Passes three reserve.
And I will contact, email Kansas Department by next week. Said earlier how it's trying to get everything ready, so.
Quite frankly, I don't mind having a bigger discussion about that whole area.
I agree.
You know, because there's not fishing there, there's not water stops there.
Well, there is fishing. There is fishing.
I stand corrected. Yes.
There is. I just looked through all the contracts we had, one of them had expired. I was trying to find out what we could spray, what we couldn't spray, what we were supposed to mow, what we weren't supposed to mow. And it's my understanding that they have corrected that they are putting fish in there and trying to keep it where people can fish. And we've been mowing more this year and we've got to do a little bit better job around the, the water so people can get in to fish.
Do we have any, any idea of what the usage is?
It's been up here in the last couple of years. Since we've made the change, there's been more campers out there. There was camper that, I think it was clear up in November last year when, when there were still people out there.
Camping's become more popular with the pandemic.
And what we do is they're supposed to call in, we get a lot of calls on Saturday, but I got a call yesterday about a guy wanting to camp and they go back to a certain area. And I explained to him that he calls in and then we keep track of the camper. So if something happens, it's, you know, it helps both parties. And that's something we need to work on maybe a little bit, getting, I don't know, but actually camping site, but to where people can know that they can go. And we've, we've dedicated two people to try to keep it mowed up.
When I first became a commissioner, I went out there and I was all pumped up. It's a really nice space. But I, at the time, I guess I haven't followed up, I didn't really believe you did a job of promoting it as an asset to the community, so.
We have, we have issues with the spillway. We closed the gates because water was running over it all the time and the asphalt that had been put over the concrete had failed and most of it was gone. I looked into having somebody come in and put the asphalt on there, but there's no guardrail, there's no anything on the backside to keep people from.
I always did think that was, looked like a hazard.
Yeah, that, that kind of concerns me. That's one reason.
Especially kids and parties, it's a remote area and the car or the kids, if they'd been drinking or, wouldn't have to be kids. We go over that and there's no guardrail there, they go over that, that's deep back there, so.
So I chose, and I was gonna talk to you about, right now the gates are welded shut because every time they change them, they cut the chains in the locks. So, but we're trying to do a little better job of keeping it clean and neat and to where people can use. If there is money, Michelle was talking to me about some possible grants for certain different things that wouldn't cost us much at all and we're gonna try to look in, look into that. And then we do have a balance from Kansas Department of Wildlife Parks, it's like a $19,000. Sitting there, they pay us every year and we keep that balance. So if we do have some expenditures, we have some money other than the budgeted money in the county like that's $10,000 a year. And we have big old tree taken out. And while we're on it, I know it's crazy at the time, I was approached about someone logging the wall. Just, just popped in my head to be quite honest and I don't know what your opinion.
We had that come to us before, Joe, and I think at the time we decided, we'd always revisit something.
Well, I think, he didn't give me exact figures, but it was like $3,500 for 22 trees. So I just wanted, I told him I would bring it up and it just popped in, so that was brought up to me, so maybe we can discuss.
It's probably the same, Joe.
Probably discuss in another session or something. And I believe that's, that's all I have for right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Trevor.
There? Hello. Just wanted to report that we received funding for the courthouse roof project. The next steps on that is the commission will need to send Katrina Ringler a letter of acceptance no later than June 17th. Once they get that letter, then we'll meet with them to put together a work plan. And no work can start until that is developed, so there is $500 for the MoCan admin built into that. So we'll need that to go, once we do the meeting with Kansas State Historic Society, we'll develop a contract on our end and our board will approve that on June 30th, so that's where we're at.
So you said there's, you need a letter from us for the letter of acceptance. Is that something that's been like a sent out to us to sign or is that something we generate?
I think it's something you generate, but they've sent you the award letter. You guys should have that.
Nice work. Thank you for that. $9,000 is definitely helpful when it comes to projects that are crucial to the courthouse, so we appreciate your, your time and effort on that.
No problem, and hopefully we can keep applying for this year after year and help fix up the courthouse.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Martha Smith, the many KES. Sanitation code discussion.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Hi Martha.
Hello, how are you guys?
Good.
Good.
So you guys have had a chance to look over the proposed environmental and sanitation codes?
Yes.
Okay. Did you guys have any questions or anything for me at this point?
I kind of had a question about the process because when we were talking about it last week, they had talked about a committee of appointed folks from you to sit down and review this to give us any input. People that actually would deal with, with these type of things to give kind of just a a general input to us prior to acceptance. I mean, I read through it and I understand much of it and it looks, a lot of your corrections and additional added terminologies is, is helpful. I, I just think for checks and balances of of approving something like this, that committee's input would be helpful and I didn't know kind of where you're at on that.
Yes, I was actually waiting to reach out to them to set up a meeting to bring these proposed changes to this kind of a crosscut of the county. You know, the, I don't have the list in front of me to who I'm specifically gonna invite to this meeting, but it's gonna be real, a couple of realtors, a couple of loan officers, bankers, potential road and bridge, possibly. I haven't decided about the road and bridge.
Installers?
I'm sorry?
Installers?
Installer, yes, installers. Property owners who have, who we've dealt with in the past, just kind of a a, a general group of people that this, that these proposed changes could potentially affect to get their back, their feedback on what they think about our proposed changes. And I was waiting to hear back from you guys to make sure that our proposed changes were okay with you guys before we went in front of this committee. And so I'm hoping to get maybe a dozen or so people, give or take a little bit, just to bounce these possibilities, propose, these proposals off of them, just to kind of see what their thoughts are. You know, whether they're in favor or against and then bring their feedback to you as the commissioners before we take these proposed changes to, to KDHE. If our committee is in favor of these proposed changes, then I'll let you know that. And then the next step after that would be to submit our proposal to the, to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment where they will take a fine tooth comb through each and every one of these proposed, each and every one of the chain, each and every one of the codes. Whether we have proposed the change to that particular section of the code or not, they still go through it and advise that they want certain sections updated. I'll give you, for example, Jefferson County here two years ago, I believe it was in 2019, they wanted to change one simple distance and I can't even remember what the specific was. They sent that proposed change to KDHE for just one, that one small approval in their eyes. KDHE went through it and sent it back and said, okay, we want you to change A, B, C, D, E, F, G and all of the above before they will approve the one small change, so. That's kind of where we are at this point, so it's gonna go to the committee, get their feedback. I'll give that feedback to you guys. If everybody in, on this committee is in favor of the proposed changes, then, you know, you guys have seen the proposed changes, then it would go to KDHE after that.
Thanks for walking us through this. We're holding our hand whenever it's more important.
And it's not something that we go through very often. As, as you can see, the last time they were updated was in, approved was in September of 1998, so we're kind of behind and that's not uncommon for most counties in Kansas, but KDHE is warning all counties to visit their environmental and sanitation codes and bring them up to date as far as terminology and not necessarily everybody be uniform because everybody, every county is unique in, in its certain ways. But we as Northeast Kansas Environmental Services would like to see the codes in our five counties be real similar to each other in what is required. So if you are moving from Atchison County to Jackson County or to Donovan County, the changes, you know, if you are in an unincorporated area, the changes are gonna be real similar between all of our counties.
Any other questions? I was thinking last week we had more questions than that, but.
Well, I had a chance to read through more thoroughly, so.
Now, if KDHE would come back and say you need to do X, Y, and Z more, does that go back to the committee or?
No, at that point, I don't believe there's gonna be drastic changes that I would not need to go back to the committee. Whatever KDHE recommends, I would make those proposed change, updates and proposed changes from KDHE and simply inform you guys that they were okay with what we submitted to them, but in addition to those, they also wanted us to do XYZ. And so I would just keep you guys in the information loop as far as what they're requiring. I don't think they're gonna be exotic changes, you know, there may be some terminology things that they've updated since I've been updated. You know, because I think the last memo that I've gotten from KDHE as far as having counties update terminology was 2015. So they may have come up with a few terms since then that they want updated, so I don't think it's gonna be anything drastic unless they say we don't want you to put in a nuisance code or we don't want you to change your acreage size. I don't anticipate that, but it would be those changes that I would want to inform you guys of that would come from KDHE.
Excellent, Martha.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem. I'll move forward with our committee getting together and then I will get their feedback to you guys and let you know what, when we move on to KDHE then.
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Jerry Henry.
Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
You look like a law lawyer with all those books behind you.
Just some books I've collected over my long, long life here, so. Did you want me to start, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead and start, Jerry.
Okay, I'll, I'll take a few minutes and go through what I've sent you and then hopefully be able to answer questions you may have, so. Every year you invite me to come and talk to the commission about achievement services and the work we are doing and ask about, you know, how our last year played out and then what we anticipate for the future, so. And I'll go through some of that real quick and I also wanna welcome Commissioner Quinn to the commission and I, I might throw a couple of little things in from history just to hopefully have her, have her understand what Achievement Services does and how long we've been doing these things, so. As you know, Achievement Services has been recognized by the state of Kansas as a community developmental disabilities organization. There are 27 such organizations in the state of Kansas. We provide services for the developing disabled citizens of our community and we're open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days out of the year. We, we at least have four to six staff working at all times, day and night and on holidays throughout the year. all times, day and night and on holidays throughout the year. As I'm sure you all heard, over and over from anybody that you funded, the last 18 months have been pretty difficult and some major challenges for all businesses. But for Achievement Services has, it has been a tremendous challenge, you know, especially when things were really difficult. A lot of businesses were closing and a lot of employees were allowed to go home to work. Achievement Services could not do that. We have people that depend on us hourly to provide them services to, for their daily activities. We have people that are in wheelchairs that we have to assist to put them in bed at night and get them up in the morning. So it was very difficult, but we had to stay on task. I, I am also demanded that our administrative staff come to work every day and we were at, at some points, learning how to do direct care work so that we could fill in if we had days where we didn't have enough staff to fully fund, fully staff our program and our projects. So those were difficult times. As you know, we wore masks and we did all the personal protection we could, but for a lot of, a lot of staff still had to touch consumers and we had to fulfill our obligations to them. So that was something that we had to take very seriously. I, I really am thankful to say that we really had no staff or none of our consumers come down with the COVID or symptoms. We did have to quarantine some people. We've had to take them, some of our consumers and quarantine them in isolated areas. So we did have challenges with that, but I, I am thankful to our staff and to the things that we did to make sure that all the people that at least we, we support did not become sick and that we did not have a lot of sickness throughout our staff. So we're still very proud of that and we're still doing a lot of protection for our people. We had a, we had a number of consumers that could not get vaccinated because of other medications that they're on. So we still have to protect them on into the future until we really know that everything is clear. I want to move on to, you know, we've done this. We've, we've had some financial losses and we still continue to have some. It's difficult to go through all the things that we were told by a number of agencies to try to retain our staff, meaning even if we had some, some of our consumers go home, that we wanted to keep staff available and have them here to recover and provide adequate staffing when the pandemic is over. And then in the end, when they were supposed to pay us for doing that, doing that, that didn't come through. So in my letter to you, I talked about the 2020 legislature approving a 5% rate increase for, for us and it went through the whole process. Governor Kelly signed the budget bill and we put it in a budget. We gave our staff some raises, but right at the end, right toward the first of July, the governor pulled that funding in the allotment process. That, that cost us $90,000. It was very difficult to go back to staff that is working overtime and tell them that, you know, we was gonna have to take back some of their raises. So, so we've, we've had to absorb that and we're, we're gonna probably take a couple of years to recover some of those things. I, I, I do want to say real quickly that, you know, Achievement Services was deemed an essential business from the start of the pandemic and, and we, you know, serve very vulnerable and very fragile, medically fragile people. And we wanted to make sure that they were all taken care of. I, I also want to quickly go to the Atchison County Commission has supported the work of Achievement Services for over 42 years. For Commissioner Quinn, in 1979, I and some parents went to the Atchison County Commission to request some funding to start Achievement Services. At that time, there were, there was absolutely no community programs for developing disabled adults. And at that time, the state of Kansas had over 4,000 citizens of the state of Kansas who were developing disabled in state operated institutions. Today, we have less than 200 people in state institutions. The front door's been closed. They are not taking any new residents into the institutions. And in 1995, Achievement Services with a, with a nice big party, we brought home the last Atchison County resident that was in a state operated institution. So we've gone a number of years with taking care of the people from our community in or in the community. So the, the first commission allotted us $30,000. Our first budget was $52,000. So you can see the county commission played an extremely important role in providing funding for us to start. And today with our budget well over $2 million, you can see that it's been quite an economic development for us. We have had some small instances where some county commissioners in other counties. I am so thankful that our county commission hasn't wandered into asking, is this a, a service that deems the support of a county commission and should it be not taken care of by the state and by the federal government? But, you know, I, I just wanted to make sure that all of you know, it's a very important program. And I know a lot of younger people don't really remember the old county home days where every county almost had a home outside the city limits or in the country somewhere. And those individuals that did not conform to societal needs was, was placed in those homes. And a lot of development disabled individuals unfortunately ended up in some county homes. So the, since the state was discovered, all institutions of government have worked together to try to provide services for the people with development disabilities in, in, in the communities. And as I say, this year, we are asking for the same $48,000. We did get a raise a couple of years ago, thankfully. The commissioners did provide us some funding. I know things are very difficult right now, but appropriation for our $48,000 is important money for Achievement Services. We have a lot of funding that has to be dedicated to certain services and programs, but the money from the county allows us to purchase vehicles and do things that we can do that is not allowed by some of the other funding we get. And also, as you know, we are constantly asked by our other funders and by donors and even the IRS, do, do you receive funding from local community for, that supports your program? They want to know that, that we do get some funding from people in our community. And so that, that money is very important to us to do that. So in closing, I just wanted to say, we had a very extremely difficult year. We've lost some funding. And I know the board and I will probably have to take a couple of years to figure out a way to try to recover some of that. We are gonna go after some people that made promises to us that didn't fulfill them yet and we'll see what happens there. But we, we thankfully were able to put some funding away for many years. My dad told me many years ago that in farming, it takes three good years to make up for one bad year. I really didn't understand that at that point, but after running a business for 42 years, I know exactly what he's talking about now. It, it does take, it takes a lot of time to make up for lost funding. So again, I appreciate your support. It is vitally important to our community and to the, the people we serve and mainly the families too. A lot of families get old and they can't take care of their individual son or daughter. And we are able to provide that for them and they can still visit. So very important that we have your support. And again, thank you for the time. And I want to apologize to the commission for the little bit of a, my, my information somehow didn't make it there on time last week. And I, I apologize for that and we'll try to do better next year. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners. I will stand for questions.
Are there any other organizations in Atchison County that provide the services that your organization does?
No, no, there is not. Being a CDDO, Community Development Disability Organization, we are the single point of entry. Anybody that has or needs services has to come to Achievement Services first. That's both for Atchison and Jackson County. So we, we also, there are, there are some programs that do provide some case management or some specialty services, but, but for 24 hour care, it's, it's pretty much just Achievement Services at this point.
No.
I had a good comment, but I was sitting in Casey's chair as a new commissioner. I really didn't understand the impact the achievement service has on so many citizens in the community.
Yeah, how many consumers are in Atchison County, Jerry?
Commissioner Quinn, what we do is we have, we, we take care of about 31 people in residential. We have like 20 at mall towers. And then we have some that in the community and then also right across from the county jail is a USDA home that we've got a low interest grant from the federal government to pay, to do that. So that, there's 10, 10 individuals, eight to 10 individuals in that building every day and that, that's operated by Achievement Services. We also own a, a building similar to those in, in Wathena and another one in Holton, that we are the landlord and the local community there and those two communities take care of them. So, so, but during the day, we have a day activity program, which is somewhat like work program. And then we have a life skills program. And, and we have like 45 individuals that are enrolled in that. They're never all here at the same time. Some will come five days a week, some three days a week and some in the morning, some in the afternoon, depending on what they can handle in the way of their abilities to, 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 to last for a whole day. So, so the county said, the county says we, or the state of Kansas recognizes we serve around 80 people, but some of them are duplicate.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Nothing else, Jerry. That's, that's all for today.
Thank you so much.
Enjoy your day.
You too. Thank you.
Okay. Karen Wilson.
You skipped. To.
Oh, wow.
Rayland.
Jerry Land.
Rayland.
Okay.
Okay, there's Rayland.
Good day. Michelle, if you want to share to Diane Nielsen the screen, we've got a few programs we'd like to focus on in the next few minutes, but do appreciate the time to share and answer questions as we get that. And as you can see, by those participants, we do have Extension Board members able to attend today. So I think by see, oh, there's five, Kent Sims is attending, Sheila Boes, Kathy Higley, Linda Meyer Jolly, also Mark Urok is on. And we've got a 4-Her youth that we hope to give a little bit of a, a two-minute elevator speech opportunity to with Ashton Jolly. But as we roll into some presentations, just to kind of give you an idea, update what Extension was able to do last year during COVID, really went on start, start off, it's through share, especially with Commissioner Quinn, being new to the commission, that we Extension are part of K-State, Kansas State University. And we do have that partnership with Atchison County, all the citizens and we are tax supported. So appreciate that, but really want to reinforce it. It is a cooperative partnership that we in Extension have. And we're gonna roll through these somewhat quickly so that we can have participation by board members. And Diane's gonna inject her, we're kind of working off one speaker, one microphone, not to get too much feedback in the same room here, so.
Yeah. So as Ray says, we would like to think of ourselves as that partnership out in community, doing lifelong education, but working on that community infrastructure. So in Atchison County, it's the best place to live and work at home. And that partnership really started back in 1915. So 1914 was what was called the Extension Council Law, Smith Lever, and Atchison County Commissioners really jumped on. And by February of 1915, they said, hey, we value education. We value the Extension work in community. So as Ray says, we're gonna talk about, a little bit just about programming, but Ray, I'm gonna let you share with this.
Quickly, last fall, last winter, we had a Zoom, well, we had many Zooms, but one of those was with our boards and our 24-member advisories were invited in for program planning. And Commissioner Henry just was on there and he, he attended too as one of our advisory members, but just, just focuses on during that Zoom, we were able to capture the photographs of those that were helping. And this was particularly about the health issue, COVID, and which developed into the campaign for do the task, wear the mask. So as you can see, Jeff Sheely's on our advisory, Albrecht Schell Murray, Mark Urok, which is on Zoom right now, Bob Chu, Larry Littner, Aaron Weaver, Desiree Locke, Becky Parsons is the board chair this year. So just kind of give you an idea, we do have membership to our advisories and our board from across the county. In the Extension Law suggests we do have membership from each of the county commissioner districts.
And so we're gonna let, we're gonna go over programs real quickly here, but we're gonna let you listen to our board members talk about that because we truly believe Extension is a grassroots program. And thinking back to COVID last year, we all know it kind of changed the world, but as we did that this year, the last 365 days, we've changed, but we still really think about being those community builders. So this happens to be just a picture. Last year's fair didn't happen like it had happened the last hundred years, but as an extension group, we said, community needs some celebration. So we really worked on taking those exhibits out to businesses in the community. We displayed them in Muskota, Ifingham, Lancaster, Atchison, with the idea that we were also trying to encourage some local business, even though we were very structured at that time of what we could and could not do. But we also wanted to prevent the spread of COVID. The magical thing was, we also did online and that online venue for fair last year actually got 19,000 views. So much more viewing of 4-H exhibits and 4-Hers did public speaking that they probably have not done before. So really in that aspect, I think there's some real positives that came out of that. As Ray said, this is the do the task, wear the mask. So we tried to align with what the health community is saying at the current time. So last winter, these came about in December when the surge was up. We went across the county from Muskota down to Potter. We cooperated with the county and the city on signing, put yard signs, banners and well, probably the next thing that you're gonna see us working on is really that community vaccination level going up. And so we will, our work continues. With that, we're gonna highlight a few programs. And Extension primarily focuses on four key areas. That would be ag and natural resources, family and communities, consumer sciences, 4-H and youth development, and community development. This particular slide brings all those four program areas together because it's on the topic of programming that we did on mental health. So last year, first quarter, we were set to do farm rural mental health because Kansas leads the nation in rural suicide. So we were set to address that and make it not that we're going to do the work of the guidance center, but it can be a stigma to talk about mental health. So we were set to do that. That was gonna be at Farm City Days. That was canceled. We switched programming to COVID, posted on Facebook and surprisingly lots of feedback there. But come June, National 4-H Council had done a survey, where are our teens doing? How are they feeling? And there were some alarming statistics there. 64% of teens said that COVID really was going to have an impact on their, their generation's mental health for the rest of their life. The other thing that stood out to me was 82% of those youth said, we just need to talk about it. So we've done a lot of talking this year. On the left handed side is a slide. I did a virtual meeting both with Atchison High School students and Marhill Mount Academy. And it really was working with teens and bringing in some grant dollars to those local schools to make some changes around mental health. And it really was working with teens and bringing in some grant dollars to those local schools to make some changes around mental health. We passed out first aid feelings for youth. But what really stands out in my mind as an agent, we were doing a 4-H training one night for our volunteers. And we were saying, here's some things you can do and tried to equip those leaders, those adults with skills. And one of our 4-H leaders said, I know I should unmute to comment, but I don't think I can because I'm afraid I'm going to cry. I don't know how I can help teens when I'm not coping myself. She followed that up later on with that thank you note for giving her permission to call. So it's just one of the many programs, but it's been an important program that work will continue. Family and Consumer Sciences, real quick, you say, what is family and consumer sciences? I like to say it's helping us eat right, raise kids, spend smart, living well in general. So when COVID first hit, there was a lot of questions about food safety and how we can treat it. So we early on did some videos and some information, but we actually went to Facebook and during the month of May, in response to kind of surveys in April, what are people needing? We did post and information daily, tied that back to the website and got follow-up calls for information. Walk Kansas on the left is another program and US Commissioners may be aware of that because county staff participate in that and I think they get a reduction in their insurance premium because they participate in it. But it's an eight-week walking program, healthy eating, that really just changes lifestyles. We did in December and then January through April, did a weekly program that we named Living Well Together. That was by Zoom and live. Sometimes we brought in guest speakers, other times I did the presentation myself, but we attracted about two hundred people in each week. Now with Zoom, the difference is my classroom before I tend to target to Atchison County. This particular program, and I also teamed up with some coworkers in Northeast Kansas. We really went Kansas primarily, but we also some weeks had people from other states. We had somebody from Canada and New Zealand that popped in, so it's another potential. Bring your attention to our Facebook posts, we tried to use that and also tried to do some good feeling type videos in those early days of COVID. Our Facebook really grew from two hundred folks, we just really didn't use it as a messenger in April to by June, we were up to about thirteen hundred on Facebook following up. And we can see the reposting of our information. Another program I've done is Holiday Challenge and it's really during that holidays, covers a little bit of mental health, but physical activity, healthy eating. And then I would also say in the area of family consumer sciences, just food safety. So I can remember, I've taught commercial businesses food safety and some of those past class participants were calling me saying, Diane, how do we deal with KDHT recommendations? So those are just a few of the programs and I think Ray will share about ag programs.
Just quickly, and I know time is running on and we'll try to respect your time and appreciate it. Just an illustration as far as yes and extension. We do work with production agriculture. This would be the corn and the soybean plot demonstrations that we have two K-State specialists are, are in the picture here. Just talking to local farmers about weed control soybean production. So that's that ongoing tradition we have also this year. We're doing a weed demonstration on a Brom field for a current issue, working with K-State again. The flower picture would come from the Morehill Mount Academy production. They're getting, they will utilize Extension information. And then the school classroom would be Mrs. Small working with her students in the issue of water quality, water pollution. So she is a user of the Extension and 4-H materials in her curriculum training. So just another example of what Extension is in Atchison County. So we're trying to give you these accomplishments from last year and ongoings. Effingham Tree Board has worked with the area forest or have an educational program on the ash. And they're getting, across our county, we're going to lose many, many ash. So it is a hot topic, so to speak. We have volunteers that do give forth, whether it be through the 4-H program or through the family and consumer science issues. But just an illustration of them doing community vitality, I think is our core mission. But them taking on community beautification under the name of the Farmer Ed's FCE. And also they would be representation as far as the 4-Hers that are alumni active in Atchison County. The center part of that would be the back to the Do the Task, Wear the Mask picture from Muskota. And as Diane already covered, as far as we had those banners and those yard signs across the county and some still are up that have weathered the conditions. And so, and for commissioners, we will get you a copy of this presentation. It was not in the original last week's sharing, but still wanted to update as far as some of the programs. And as we roll into the 4-H youth development, then we'll call on Ashton Jolly to give just a little comment as we're clicking along on time here.
Yeah, so with, with that 4-H work starts early at seven years old, but we're really trying to prepare those youth to be ready for school, work and life, so they're contributing back to their communities. So Atchison Shamrocks in the last slide really applied for a grant online, not for themselves, but as a 4-H members. They've had a working relationship with county nursing home residents. They plan a landscape beautification project, they're going to donate to the Humane Society. But these are a few pictures of 4-Hers. So we have a state specialist that's really training our adult volunteers about how to kid, get kids to thrive and get that extra up in life so they really succeed. Preparing them for careers starts during public speaking. This year, kids got lots of tech experience because they talked online through an app called Slip Grid that we use. Last year found out that senior citizens were not going to get their traditional meal the day after Christmas because the churches just didn't have the volunteers to do that. So we brought in our 4-H members, they cooked the meal, they delivered that. So that's kind of service learning. As Ray's mentioned, STEM in school, so we do, STEM is science, technology, environment, ag, arts and math in local schools using 4-H curriculum. Also then back to just there's some pictures from fair exhibition that we did. And as we mentioned, we really use that 4-H is the vehicle that helps those adult communities. So as you look at 4-H alum, I think a Jack Bauer would be a 4-Her, but now he's a chairman of that board of your commission. So it's those types of things that really we don't measure in days or years. It's really lifetime is where Extension work really kicks in. And I think with that, we would like to hear from Ashton Jolly and our board at this point in time.
I guess I'll go first. Hi, everyone. My name's Ashton Jolly and as Diane said before, I am a current 4-Her of Atchison County 4-H. I currently serve as my club's president, so Lancaster Lightnings president. And I'm also the site council president for our county. And I'm going to be talking about how 4-H has impacted me and how it's unlike any other organization I've ever been in. So when I first entered 4-H, I entered when I was seven years old, so I was still pretty young and very, very shy. Through 4-H, I had gained so much public speaking knowledge and I can do things like this. I can talk in front of crowds without being nervous at all. And 4-H has really opened up a lot of opportunities for me. I've had lots of opportunities to go to state events and meet other 4-Hers and be able to talk on a larger scale as well. And 4-H has also helped me learn how to interact with other people that aren't from my area and interact with the younger kids. 4-H isn't just about the projects, it's about learning throughout those projects and being able to exhibit what you have learned. And that's the overall goal is to make sure that 4-Hers are learning throughout the process and not just doing it to do it. 4-H is also different because it's very community-based, so there's a lot of community help. And we strive to inform the community on what we're doing as far as a 4-H family, you could call it. And that's how 4-H has infected me and how 4-H is unlike any other organization I've been in. It's very different and it's probably one of my favorite things that I have involved myself in. And although my 4-H career is ending, I'm hoping that I can advocate for 4-H later on throughout life.
Thank you, Ashton. And no, your career's not ending, it's still beginning as you mature. Going to count on you and I think you've got some buffering where your location, but appreciate you sharing, heard that all. Jack, we got time to go ahead and have some other board members talk?
We have a big agenda today.
Okay, well, briefly, we'll go ahead and just have some, some visit. And I think Kathy Higley, if you would like to go ahead and unmute. And then Linda Meyer Jolly, are you on? You can be after Kathy. That's the fun of distance technology. Kathy, are you able to unmute?
Okay, now can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. I just want to follow up with what Ashton was saying. Yes, the 4-H experience that they have gained, it gets carried over into life. I have thirty years of experience with human resources and looking at things from that perspective. I've seen that it makes an effect in people's abilities to become good employees for, for all of our businesses and things throughout the, the county and, and the city and everywhere. I would like to comment regarding the resources that are available through the Extension offices. Currently, we are locate, our Extension office is located in Effingham. We, as a board, have looked at the facilities that we have there are not very conducive to providing some of the programs that we have the, the ability to, to present. So we are looking in, in the presentation or in the budget request this year to look at possibly making our location be in Atchison. There's the Atchison Elementary Schools and Middle School, High School, as well as Trinity Lutheran Schools and St. Benedict's Schools, all of those are, are, and the college. All of these are areas that our, our Extension Office has had impacts in, as well as the county schools. And by being able to possibly look at that and get our staffing up, Diane and Ray have done without an office assistant throughout the past year. I've looked at some of the expectations for salaries and benefits and things like this that you would, you would want for an office assistant. And we're hoping that we can have some additional funding provided that we'll be able to get that office assistant and then be able to utilize the resources from K-State as well as national resources that are available for, to Extension than to be utilized in Atchison County and to help other programs as well as just the Extension. I think they have an impact that is overlooked a lot of times. And if we were in an area where, in Atchison, possibly where we could be more readily seen by, by the population, they would be able to utilize even more than all the programs and things that have been carried on by our Extension programs in the last year. It's been quite eye-opening to me to be on the board and, and see some of the impacts that we're, we have. But to see the resources that are available through the Extension Office is going to make a difference in creating stable life functioning for all those people who have the opportunity to take advantage of it. And I think we've seen some growth in our 4-H numbers throughout the county as well as just other people in the county being able to take, take some advantages and some progress and information growth through some of the programs, especially like the Living Well series and, which is a family and consumer, but also all of the ag programs that, that get provided through our Extension Office. So I'd just like to encourage you to look closely at the requests that the budget is, is being submitted. The board has looked at this, I was participated in some of the, the talks for the districting and we've looked at a number of things there. That's something we want to continue to look at and move forward with as we can. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kathy. Linda, are you able to connect?
Yes, I'm on and I will be, because I know you guys do have a packed agenda. But in the information that we submitted, I think you can see when you go through and analyze what different counties contribute on a per capita basis. Atchison is at the, at the very low end, I think it could be, it's possible we're right at the last. And so I, I do have children that participate in the 4-H program. In fact, Ashton is my daughter. I think that 4-H is just one of the examples to show what the Extension Office can provide. But I think it's imperative that the commission at least consider the condition of the building, the lack of equipment. They've, they've managed to pull through so far, but we also are very cognizant that we are not going to have Ray and Diane forever. And when they retire, I think that we could be in a pretty scary position. And so I firmly believe that the preventative type of programming that the Extension Office provides is imperative to the positive growth for all of the communities in the county and deserves consideration for the additional funding that's been requested. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. You can get back, you can get back to work. I would just tease a little bit quickly, Kent or Sheila or Mark, do you have any comments from the board?
I'd just say real quickly, this is Kent Sims. It might look like we've been on a level budget over the years. We've been on a declining budget because of decreasing purchasing power. And we just need to have more resources to make sure we can remain relevant. The other thought I had was that, that as we look forward to this districting process, which we've talked with, with the commission some about before, but we've got to move on with that and kind of interrupted the last year with COVID and maybe some other counties being a little bit slower and more, needing more time to warm up to it. But we need to keep on that, we need to work with the commission some in the, in the ensuing year because commissioners have a must-have by law, a role and at the first in this districting process where, where they actually appoint part of the board. appoint part of the board or are part of the board or something. And so we want to keep the dialogue open there. And I think that's, I think everything else has been well said.
Thank you, Kent. Sheila or Mark?
Yeah, I would just make a couple of comments. I mean, I'm new to the board, so I'm, I'm learning the uh, around the budgeting process. That's one of the reasons I joined the others. Uh, it's already been said here, but I think there needs to be consideration to look at the budget, the fact that you know, inherently even with inflation, we, we haven't seen uh, the growth in the budget and resources to help fund the programs that we're talking about today. So I would just encourage, you know, a thorough review of the budget request and what we're asking for, I think is, 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 is very reasonable. So thank you for your time and uh, consideration.
Thank you, Mark. You can go out and, you know, you can't plant too many tomatoes or peppers today. You can go prune your apple trees.
There we go.
Hey, commissioners, can you get, in his economic world, economic development world, how many, how many trees would you guess he has planted in his orchard? No guesses. Okay, tell them, go ahead and tell them, Mark.
Yeah, so we, we put in thirteen hundred trees, a high intensity and high density um apple orchard. So it's on trellises and high tensile wire. So it's first of its kind in Ashson County.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Sheila, you got anything to close with?
Yeah, you can hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
First, I want to thank the county commissioners. I've been up there many times over many years asking for money. And I know you sit in a very difficult place because you can't give everybody everything. Uh, secondly, I, I, everything that's been said here with, from the other board members, I agree a hundred percent. Uh, the, the extension uh, is, is in need, is in need for additional funding. And speaking as a taxpayer in Atchison County, I'd like to see him get more money. And the last thing I'm going to say is I've worked with these two people, Ray and Diane for many years on many different things. And some of it, a lot of it was work related from the standpoint of when Lyme disease was an issue, who, who partnered with, with us is in the way of getting the little the little briquettes out to try to help absorb some of the Ray, I know knows what I'm talking about, trying to absorb water so that there was a decrease in mosquitoes. Uh, clear to the, the uh, most recent uh, issue of the uh, do the task, wear the mask. I want you to know that was even out in Garden City. They were seeing what we were doing and they were impressed. Uh, they were doing their own thing too, but I'm just saying there's a lot of good that the extension does. And uh, that's not just today or this year. I mean, that's been going on for some time. But I know they need the help. So again, just uh really respectfully asking you to consider increased funding for them. I know they need it. I know they need it. And thank you for your time.
I think there's any other board members that have joined and we'll probably move to the last slide, but we do want to open up the commissioners. Any quick questions and uh, probably would certainly offer extension is willing to come to one of your workstations. Talk more, uh, answer questions, have more dialogue. So uh, any questions from the commissioners? Appreciate your time.
Uh, we have questions, yes.
Okay.
Take down the slides.
Did you what? Jack, I did.
On the slide?
We can be done with the slides if you want that. We'll stop screen sharing and go ahead and answer questions. And we'll share this also with you as a follow up. Thank you for your time. Okay.
Mister, uh, Noel has a question.
Um, in previous budgets, we've submitted uh, capital outlay funds that was directed to be going toward a car or van. I see you've got a car or van listed on your uh, want list. But there's zero in capital outlay. Where did that go?
Oh. Your, the commission is the holder of the capital outlay and yes, it is time to.
Okay, I, I thought that was budgeted to you are.
And it is.
So that, that fund, that money is uh, available for that. How much is in there?
That's a good question. We have to get clarified. There'd be twenty thousand plus. And there would be my best recollection, but I think Michelle would have to do the digging on that area. So yeah, but his first commissions is look at that in capital outlight, but it is, it's one of those emission, emerging issues as well as the copy machine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Um, I have several questions. So are there any other organizations in Atchison County that provide the services that your organization does?
I would say that as education, so we are community education um, providing, so we might partner with others in community, but one of the things extension does is really, we bring community together to look at an issue. So no, no commissioners are here, but in two thousand and nine, I came to commissioners and talked to us about county health ranking. You now see that we come together as a community and did a live well, live Atchison. So that's the work. I'm still going to support that healthy wellbeing. But as a whole, I would say it's that collective work that really makes impact in community. That's a long answer, but I would say very unique in community.
Okay, um, and then you had mentioned about moving to the city of Atchison possibly. Have you identified a facility that you would like to move to or?
A county facility is, is, as you'll look at other counties across the state of Kansas, many extension programs are in county facilities. And that's probably been an ongoing idea, request. Um, and we understand there's tight space for Atchison County offices, buildings. Uh, so just for doing some research, reached out to one commercial facility within Atchison and uh, they would suggest fifteen hundred dollars per month for the rent. And um, they're getting, it was just kind of that feeler to get it out there, Casey.
Okay. And as far as the facility, what would you guys need as far as space and amenities?
Well, uh, presently, extension is two agents. We have an office professional when we have one employed. Uh, we've become accustomed to having a small meeting room. Um, you always need storage room and also a, oh, actually a demonstration kitchen facility slash meeting room would, would make a nice extension educational complex and whether that is a shared facility with other county entities and it would across the state of Kansas, extension programs have different mixes, so to speak, when they are in county facilities. And that's, I mean, longer. How many square feet? I cannot tell you exactly um, what would be that.
But, but I would recall where the health department was and where they are now. Probably a little different configuration, but as I look at the health department and I think there's some storage in their basement area. It's that type of facility that we would be looking at because they have that conference room in the front. Um, reception area, probably a larger conference room because we can have twenty to fifty, fifty is probably a large group, but we can have a little bit larger group. And I've done some things in the health department conference room and it's a little tight sometimes for programming, but some office spaces as well. We do a lot of in-house printing and so we're just going to have a little more space for those offices and say like the courthouse.
Okay, um, on your extension overview that you provided for us, uh, the metrics on your program reaches. How are those, how are you um, measuring those?
The flip grid counts and the Facebook counts. Is that what you're asking?
Or? Yes.
Yeah.
So, so actually our webpage with those flip grid, there's a built-in counter. So they have to sign in and register those. So those are measurements. Facebook is probably just number of friends. Then as we are actually doing individual programming. The university requires us as part of that equal opportunity. We record people, we actually do demographic background for individuals. So as we say those, those are probably documented in programming. We just didn't share all those details.
Okay, um, the farm to fork program, are there any um thoughts about expanding that county wide into the like USD four oh nine or St. Benedict's or Trinity?
Probably um, using that title, Casey, it's the school gardens uh, was one aspect. So we've been doing that four oh nine at the um, elementary school.
Okay.
Uh, the, the example of the two young ladies feeling the corn, that was here in three seventy-seven. All the elementary school children have the opportunity to check. I mean, I, I provided the ear corn. So then they got the hands on ear corn. They could run it through a grinder. I had a, you know, a shell or a grinder. And with the idea, this is an ear corn. We're going to take it to cornmeal to corn grits. Uh, it is a locally grown uh, food. And yes, if you're really interested in corn processing, maybe bungee uh, milling would be that career exploration that we try to tie into a little bit, but certainly room for expansion as far as that uh, farm to fork idea.
Okay.
I would just add, I participate in the farmer's school program, which isn't a direct result of that's an extension, but I use K-State Extension Services to, to help provide guidance. There, they were key in designing my high tunnels. And they provide the, the grafting services for the tomatoes that eventually end up uh, on the farm to school program.
Awesome.
So did you go to the local for that or did you access K-State?
Uh, they're based in Alath. It's Dr. Kerry Revard. So uh, Ray, you know, uh, Kerry, I mean.
We planted tomatoes that one day on your farm.
That's right. Put it in tomato style, that's right.
Eric, what Mark is sharing as far as the Olathe campus is a research campus. And the hor- commercial horticulture specialist of K-State, this Kerry Revard has worked with Mark on the Uroch Farm operation. Um, and what Mark is suggesting, he is involved locally as well as a bigger aspect. Uh, taking the concept of, of farm to fork uh, in some of his sharing.
Yeah, farmer, the farmer's school program, but not directly. You can say it's length.
Yeah, and just a little bit for background. So if you think of us and we've got Benedictine College. You have Highland Community College, but you actually have K-State Campus here in Atchison County. Because not only can that kid on, who's taking an online class and meets a proctor, we as, as actually K-State faculty can do that test proctoring. But also if any, any individual in community has a problem that is they need to. So Farmer's Market, for instance, I worked with a uh, vendor there who wanted to bring her product up to scale, but it wasn't preserved safely. So I could take her to K-State Innovative Labs or actually send her product there. It was tested, it was changed to make it safe. And because you have that local extension program, there's not a charge for that. Where if she had gone out commercially or even through K-State without that extension connection, then each session that she did with would have been four hundred to a thousand dollars. So there's lots of resources. So Ray and I are not the specialists like Kerry Revard. But we're specialized in knowing what specialists can offer community. So it's a real, it's a big package and a lot of times you only see that local, but there's a real behind the scenes networking that happens in extension.
And I just have one other question based on that extension overview you sent. Um, and again, I apologize for not understanding all of the inner workings of extension, but um, when you were explaining in here that and I think Mr. Sims mentioned the districting process where you would need the county commission's help. Um, I found it a little alarming that you had pointed out that Atchison County is appears to be a liability to other potential counties. And that Meadowlark extension was our only option because Leavenworth and Brown and Donovan did not want to have discussions of, of um districting with us. Can you explain that a little bit? And how we can overcome maybe some of those challenges and not be tied to one option that maybe be a little more um attractive to the other surrounding counties on I just, that statement, I was just kind of like, um.
Well, we'll, we'll take a stab at it, Casey, and we may have to come back away from the commission meeting and that, we can certainly do that. But in the world of districting, counties look at nearby counties or adjoining counties. This districting concept started many years ago with Leavenworth County. We thought we was having good discussions. And um, as oh, between Leavenworth County Commission, uh, they were seeing issues. Their size, their valuation, did they want to join with an Atchison County? And for some reason they, the commission kind of thought not. So if that's the term liability, a smaller to a bigger county, but it would have been a good. It would have been a good fit at that point in time. Then when we, the board last year had serious discussion as officers of the board, serious discussions with Donovan County. And uh, then that kind of little, well, that's if you're looking at Donovan County, it looks at Brown County. And um, some discussions were started, but there again, in Brown County's situation at the moment. Uh, they were hesitant to come to the discussion table. And so whether that was they view an Atchison County as a liability, they the well, they're getting their evaluations better than Atchison County. Uh, but just in their programming, they are a one agent county by their choice. And um, whether they were seeing Atchison County being that liability, and that may not be the best word. Uh, Casey, but um, that just did not come to be for the discussions when Brown County pulled out, Donovan County pulled out. Um, so, uh, they're getting, if you need more discussion, we'll, uh, we can come talk to you, to you.
Okay, and then Meadowlark would be Jackson, Nemaha and Jefferson, is that correct?
Yes, uh-huh. Yes, they have, they have a long history of being in the district. And um, some years ago, Atchison County Board Chair reached out to them and at that moment in time. Uh, they were very satisfied being a three county district.
Okay.
Okay, but it's been some time. So there's been water under the bridge, so to speak, and um it's just districting, we got to keep. It is a, you know, I mean, it's a priority from the state of Kansas for all the extensions to be looking at districting. So Atchison County, we're we're trying to do some looking.
Seventy-five percent of your budget is payroll. If I was to run a business, I'd be questioning. Why can't it be half that?
I think it's prob, so as office professional and agents. Both of those, if you look at those figures are beyond, are below the state standards or averages. But what we've done over time is the operating budget. We probably not always a salary, but it just, so if you look at Atchison County, we're like four thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars per agent and operating. You look at Donovan County, I think about ten thousand. Um, you look at Brown County is eleven thousand. So we just don't have the extra dollars. So it really makes that high in payroll, I think.
Well, you have two agents, but we just have one.
Um, I would, for, for myself, years ago, I was in a one agent county out in Western Kansas. I feel like you are putting out fires rather than doing education. And Atchison County has twice the population. I think in Brown County, you're not going to see a family in consumer science programs. You're not going to see some of the depths of programming that you have here. So I think if you want to look at quality of life, I think two agents will help contribute that in a much more long-term way and an effective way than a one agent.
Sounds like your board's got some big decisions to make.
They do have big decisions to make and working with commissioners too, yes.
Yeah, anything else, Eric? It's been six years since the Leavenworth deal fell through right when I got on. Yet another year of non-districting, non-advancement of that. So I think at some point, there's going to have to be some decision making.
Oh, wouldn't disagree. Appreciate time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I suggest we take a recess at three o'clock. From recess. Everybody hear me? We're back from recess. Memorial Hall Trustees, are you on? They're not on, so they'll have to either come back and whatever. So Karen Wilson, Northeast Kansas area on aging.
Good afternoon, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you for your time. I just, I, I kind of feel a little bit inadequate. Cause I don't have all of the information everybody else has. I just have a few comments. You know, we are asking for the same amount we've asked for from you for the last several years, which is what, twenty-six hundred thirty-seven dollars, I believe? Yeah, the reason we are asking for the funding is we are required to have local community support for our administrative money at the federal level. Every dollar of match equates to eight dollars and fifty cents of federal money. So we do ask each county to contribute. And that's the amount for Atchison. And it's based on populations and usage, so a little history on that. We have been in existence since nineteen seventy-three. We are the single point of entry for aging services. Currently, we are serving four hundred and eighty-seven individuals in Atchison County. And that's with everyday services. Those are the, the meals, those are the baths, that's the homemaking, all of those types of services. And I'm not going to get into the other programs that we do because I'm not asking for funding for those programs. So, but that's what we are asking for the funding for is to make our match. And then actually, the money goes back to Atchison County. So for the last, the last year is kind of an odd year for us. But we did put a hundred and forty thousand back into Atchison County between the money we gave to Project Concern for Services and the funds that went to Atchison Hospital for their services. So we do partner our contract with local providers in the community. And the majority of the funding does end up back in your area. So it's kind of a convoluted process. But it is a federal program through the Older Americans Act. It does go to the state. There are eleven area agencies on aging in Kansas. And we are the one for Northeast. And so we serve Washington, Marshall, Nemaha, Brown, Donovan, Atchison and Jackson Counties.
So I have a few questions. So just to recap kind of what you explained. So what we do is we give you the two thousand six thirty-seven. And then of that, each dollar gets matched by eight dollars and fifty cents of federal money?
Correct.
So, so our contribution of the two thousand six thirty-seven would generate twenty-two thousand four fourteen fifty for Atchison County?
Correct.
Okay, and that all comes back to Atchison County? And then you had given an example, you're, you have four hundred and eighty some clients within Atchison County that you provide meals, baths and homemaking through organizations like Project Concern?
Correct.
And then you also mentioned that you had given some money to Amberwell, is that correct?
That is correct. We do not do direct service other than case management and the person centered plan. We develop the plan with the client. So when we visit with the client, we determine what their wants and needs are. So if they need a home delivered meal, if they need someone to come in and help them clean, if they need someone to give them a bath. We authorize that plan and we pay for a portion of that.
Okay, thank you for explaining that.
Yeah, I'm on this board and it's really amazing what they've done this last year with the pandemic. And we're, all these centers, the feeding centers that through all of the different counties, of course, had to be shut down. They had to scramble to find shelf-stable meals, substitutes for all of these services. They're also dealing with the transportation in many of the counties. So they've really done a fantastic job this last year.
It's been a challenge. Some of our, some of the guidelines have been pretty flexible. However, I mean, this is a side note, it's not something that we ask for funding. But we are the nursing home pre-admission screening. Anybody going into a nursing facility has to be screened by one of our caseworkers to make sure that's a proper placement for them. We still had to do those face to face. So we were doing things through windows, through Zoom, through, I mean, we would sit on the, on the deck outside the window. So we could actually make physical contact, because that was a requirement. And as Eric said, we, we were very successful in working with all of our meal sites and getting shelf-stable and carry out meals. You know, because our centers were closing down in Atchison. That was of course Project Concern and then Town and Country both. But so lots of challenges, but we were, we might have missed a few days. But we, we transitioned real quickly to keep those services going.
They also lobby for aged issues. And I've been kept abreast on things that are legislative proposals and things that have been going on. And some good, not some, not so good.
That is very accurate. Very challenging.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions.
No, thank you.
Thanks for appearing, Karen.
Right, thank you for your time.
Okay, Michelle, we got a couple things for you to do.
Yes, actually, those are located in the folder. I do have a listing of some papers, paper items that are in my office that I would like to dispose of properly. Part of that are the maps that are downstairs in the hallway. So we can get rid of those for Roger.
And those have been scanned in.
Those have all been scanned in, correct. And most of the items on the list, we have just kept past our retention period. So, but I like to keep a listing of those so we, in the office, can tell when something has been disposed of.
So, let's hear, we entertain a motion for the Board of County Commissioners, Atchison County. To hereby order Michelle Phillips County Clerk as per KR, KR five three dash two, dash one eighteen. KR fifty-three dash two, one nineteen. KR fifty-three dash two, dash one sixty. KR fifty-three dash two, slash forty. KR fifty-three dash two, one twenty-two amendments there to disposive records. In witness, we do our hand the twenty-fifth day of May. Kind of a motion to.
Make that motion.
Moved by Commissioner Noel.
One second.
Second by Commissioner Quinn, discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pass this through to them.
The second item I have is the approval of the twenty twenty-one membership dues for the Kansas County Commission Association. That has been based off population and I emailed it to you. And I don't think it's increased at all since two thousand and fifteen. So that would be for your approval to go ahead and I'll get that approval payment.
Sure, we entertain a motion to approve the purchase order. We've discussed it. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. County Council, updates. What is, brought to my attention regarding the CDBG grant. That they're in need of a resolution to authorize the application. Yeah, they've given the thirty-first. Do the commissioners have that resolution?
I do not believe they do.
I have that too.
Yes, maybe you do.
I'll double check, so she had a family, our point person had a family medical emergency and passed it off. So let me look and double check if I had it before. Um, she left working.
I received an email, did you receive the same email as far as your purports?
Yes, so when I asked her for that additional information, she sent that, but not the resolution information. So we can just ask Gloria, because Elizabeth was going to get it to us and then she had to leave.
Just kind of explore that email.
Yep.
So we need to pass that today.
There, the one that passed today. I have sent out the request for proposals to four different organizations. And have already received actually the one from SCAD. But I think this, the signatures, the resolution is based off of the public hearing that we had last week in regards to applying for the grant. So I have a print, so I'm going to move and grab that for a quick.
I have just seen the resolution. It does not mention SCAD. Do they go by SCAD?
South Central Kansas.
Right.
Yeah.
It doesn't mention that, so it doesn't have anything. Well, you definitely have to dot all those i's and cross the t's for this grant. Will be worth.
Thank you.
We have a resolution number.
Resolution number two zero two one dash one four eight zero.
Have a resolution here, number two oh two one dash one four eight zero. Resolution clarifying legal authority to apply for the twenty twenty-one Kansas Small City Community Development Plot Grant. The Kansas Department of Commerce in authorizing the mayor to sign and submit such application. This would be the chairman. I have a motion to.
Can I ask one quick question? Is it going to matter that it says the city slash county of Atchison? Because the only reason I ask is they told us since the city got round one that they're ineligible. So I don't want us to become ineligible with the wording of this.
Yeah, as I said, the first time I saw this was today, it sure looks like it was just cut and paste.
Right.
Did you want to change it, Pat?
Well.
I think we should review it.
We could vote on it and have it redone and I could sign it later.
Yes, I would suggest that.
Okay. The motion would be to pass resolution twenty twenty-one fourteen eighty to be signed by the chairman. Later date.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Noel, second by Commissioner Quinn, especially hearing that is ready to vote. Pass this through. Anything else, Pat? We have an executive session, there are actually two executive sessions today. Team of Anderson HR Director, how much time do you need?
I think we're in bridge first, because he's got to leave at four.
Yes, I'd like to do road and bridge first, about twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes, okay.
And how, twenty minutes? And who else is going to be there?
Joe Snyder and Jamie Madison.
Sure.
And Pat.
I don't want you out.
We always want you.
I didn't get where he was going. And this would be for.
Non-elected personnel?
Are we ready?
Are they coming in here?
What's that, I didn't know if there's going to be a lot.
Okay, they're coming.
They're on their way, okay. So I will move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at three fifteen PM to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four three one nine B one. And that the purposes of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board of, board come out of the executive session at three thirty-five PM in the commission room, first floor courthouse. And those present will be the three commissioners, Pat Henderson, County Counselor, Jamie Madison, HR and Joe Snyder, Road and Bridge. I made the motion.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
I don't, I don't do it, she does, correct me? We on?
Hey, we're back for the executive session. And I have an announcement to make with a vote, of course. But Joe Snyder has been working as a road bridge supervisor, superintendent for several years. Is now also going to take on the duties of what the Public Works Director did prior to him leaving the county last spring. So Joe's going to have a fifteen thousand dollar increase in salary. These additional duties and responsibilities, taking him to sixty-five thousand dollars. I have a motion to approve.
We'll make that motion.
Moved by Commissioner Noel, second by Commissioner Quinn, discussion.
I would just like to say, so the Public Works Director is no longer a position at the county. We are restructuring based on identifying our needs for the county. And so the raise, like Chairman Bauer said, is absorbing duties and responsibilities from that position that no longer fits what our needs are, so.
Yeah, I echo that.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pass this through to them. Okay, we need another executive session.
Okay, I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at three thirty-seven PM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four three one nine B one. And that the purposes of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the Board of County, Board come out of executive session at, you said twenty minutes. Three fifty-seven PM in the, in the commission room, first floor courthouse. And those present will be the three commissioners. And Pat Henderson, County Counselor.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Your executive session, Ms. Michelle sets us up. Your executive session, as Michelle sets us up. We're going to keep you. Okay, we're back. We need to have an executive session.
For attorney client. Okay, I'll move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at three fifty-four P M. For consultation with an attorney for the public party, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship as allowed by K S A seventy-five dash four three one nine B two. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion. And that the board come out of executive session at, how long do we need? Twenty minutes?
Fifty.
What, fifteen?
Twenty.
Twenty. Come out at four nineteen P M. In the commission room, first floor courthouse, and thus present will be the three commissioners, Pat Henderson and Corey Scott.
Second.
You have a second?
Yeah.
Yes.
All the favors, if I was saying, all right. We have some time, a lot of the public comment.
We do have one, once you have a comment.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep. Hi, Joe.
All right, yeah, I just, I kind of went back and forth debating whether I should be the one to say something like this. But as a resident of the county, I feel like I probably should to go ahead. You know, a couple of weeks ago, the city was invited to participate in, in a joint, you know, joint meeting with the county. And, and you know, we actually had four representatives up there at the county commission meeting. You know, and we, and we discussed a little bit, the, the, the potential for a joint agreement. And we had left it that, that, you know, there'd be two or three thoughts that each of the governing bodies would essentially bring back to, to the group during our, our, our actual public, you know, joint meeting. And, and it never really got that far at the public meeting, you know. It started out with essentially a presentation on how the county was not doing its part. And I, I think that there's some things that are, that are being misconstrued here, like, for instance, the sales tax money is not the county's money. I mean, you can say it a million times, that, that doesn't make it true. There, there is, you know, there's no getting right or getting whole because it's a general use tax, not a dedicated sales tax. Most importantly, it's the taxpayers' money. It's not the county money. It's the taxpayers' money. The city has a statutory right and responsibility to assure that its portion of the tax money is spent in the best interest of, of taxpayers. Now, I, I think that there's been a lot of comments made. And even this morning, you know, there were some comments made about how, you know, the city manager was, you know, trying to trap the county by asking seven people for information regarding the sales tax. And, and, and I think that's, you know, that's, that's just simply not true. I mean, nobody at the city knew that Fund eight ninety-seven existed until last Monday. And we've been asking the city, the city leadership's been asking for the information regarding the sales tax, you know, for years and years and years. And, and if there was one person that you guys could identify that capable of answering all of the city's questions, seven people would not need to be asked. So I, I think that, you know, city staff, you know, this morning, we, we were public guests at your workshop. We were kind of treated like second-class citizens and a sitting commissioner wasn't even allowed to ask city staff for clarification on a state statute. And that's fine. I mean, but if you're going to treat people poorly, you can't expect them to want to work with you. Working together is a two-way street. I think that, you know, this, with regarding the sales tax, the county leadership's being a little bit disingenuous. You're saying that the city isn't following the intention of the voters based on the language of the ballot question. Yet if the city were to just give you, give the county more money, you probably have to, you wouldn't be able to use it on solid waste and joint communications because those are already fully funded. So you'd use it, what, on road and bridge or other programs? Now, that would not be following the intention of the voters based on the language of the ballot question. So, so for you to say that the city's not, not doing, not following the voter's intent from nineteen ninety-three and you want more money that, that, just so you could not follow the voter's intent from nineteen ninety-three, that, again, that's disingenuous, if you ask me. Now.
So it's been a long day. So are you ready to wrap it up?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I, I realize that. And, and I'm about to wrap it up. I just want to, you know, recognize that.
Keep going.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to hear what you, keep going. This is how we get things done. Keep going, telling you what.
The elephant, the elephant in the room is money, right? I mean, that's, that, you, you, we can talk about, you know, the transparency issue. We can talk about, you know, the, the, the two governments not getting along, but, you know, let's, let's be real about this. The heart of this issue is the money that's there, right? There's too much money being generated by this sales tax based on what the initial language said that the voters wanted for joint communications and solid waste. And, and you would like, the county would like for more money and the city doesn't want to give more money up. So it's, it's, that's the heart of this issue. So if the county would, I mean, I think if the county were to present a plan to the city that would actually benefit city taxpayers rather than hurt them financially, then, then maybe we could, we could work something out. I, I just, I feel like, you know, going to the state legislature to try and force the money to move from one to the other, which, you know, Commissioner Bauer said this morning they would do again in January. You know, I think that commissioners have attacked the city using this faulty logic that it's county money, that you're entitled to it and that the city's just being mean. And then you're saying this, it's the city's fault that you can't work out an agreement. So I just think that a little self-examination and reflection is, is necessary there if, if we want to really move past this. And, and that's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Joe.
Well, I would just like to kind of explain our stance again based on the option that we provided in the, in our local meeting. Because when we say the city versus county, like, the city of Atchison is part of Atchison County. So when a county commissioner refers to Atchison County, well, I should say, when I, as a county commissioner, refer to Atchison County, I'm referring to every citizen that is in Atchison County, city of Atchison, city of Effingham, city of Lancaster, city of Mascota, city of here, and all of us. As far as you, and, and I agree with a lot of the things that you've said, that there is an ample supply of, of money based on the two budgets, which I think is a good problem for a county to have. I mean, to have additional funding to be able to you, be utilized within our boundaries. And as far as the apportionment rates, you had mentioned the resolution that was, that states the four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars that you, that the city of Atchison thinks is fair. But when you looked at the apportionment rates, that your portion of the budgeted funds, and I'm speaking city of Atchison portion, would be nine hundred and sixty thousand four seventy-four point sixty-five. And that is based on the 2020 budget. So four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars is a lot less than that. And I, and I understand there's also an argument or, or a rebuttal on the tipping fees. And that's why I believe any gray area that this has caused, I think the tipping fee should go away because it needs to be black and white. We have sales tax money we're collecting. We have budgeted departments that need funding. And then we have an overage that is then distributed within each entity. And based on, I don't have in front of me, help me, Pat, K S twelve dash eight ninety-seven. One eighty-nine, that any additional funding outside of what is budgeted can be utilized under those entities. So right now, as the county looks at it, when we're making up, and again, I'm just going to do a quick estimation based on these numbers, nine sixty-four seventy-five sixty-five minus four hundred and forty thousand dollars. When we're making up five hundred and sixteen thousand and change of the city of Atchison's apportionment, sure. It doesn't, I mean, we're, we're making it that up as the balance of county. And if, if the city of Atchison, which we've had the discussion, the apportionment rates are developed by the state of Kansas. If you were paying your portion, that would then allow the county budget to have approximately four hundred and twenty-one thousand to be used for county needs, just like the cities would have, you would have four hundred and thirty instead of the six hundred. And I guess the use tax wouldn't follow it, but in, except you guys are just keeping yours on top of it without distributing, if that makes sense.
City taxpayers are paying the majority of this, of the sales tax. I mean, this is at eighty percent of this, of this money in a typical year comes from the city. And you, and the county gets sixty-three percent of it. So I don't see how you can say that the city.
How do you know that, Joe?
No, wait, I want to understand.
That's a typical year. Yes, that's exactly right.
Now, how do you know that they're paying it?
It's, it, it comes from the city of Atchison. Eighty percent of the revenue comes from city businesses with, that take advantage of city infrastructure. And so for you to say that the city's not paying its fair share, the city's paying more than its fair share.
Joe, how do you know that eighty percent of the sales tax is done by the citizens of Atchison?
I'm saying that eighty percent of sales tax comes from businesses within the city of Atchison. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, but then that necessarily the citizens. Okay.
Well, a lot of those are the citizens of.
Collected by would be the appropriate. Order.
Not for the businesses that, that were in the city of Atchison, that money would not be collected at all. So let's just, let's not ignore that fact.
Sorry, can you state that again? I didn't, I didn't hear you.
If not for the businesses existing in the city of Atchison, they may not, that money may not exist at all. Let's, so let's not, let's not ignore that fact.
Correct. But I think going back to the original voter intent and the apportionment, you have to realize that there are several businesses within the city of Atchison ran by county residents. We're all in this together. That's what I'm trying to stress.
And that's fine. They're, they're, let them make a living in the city. That's great. I, I, I think that's an awesome thing. I, I, I have no problem. Nobody in the city should have any problem with that.
Let them make a living in the city. I'm not following you.
I said, you're, you're saying that there's county residents that have businesses in the city. That's awesome. I think that's a fantastic thing. That, that doesn't change the fact that, that the money is generated within the city. And that's the city infrastructure is where the, where those, those businesses are located, right?
Was the sales tax ever designated for infrastructure?
Excuse me?
Was the sales tax ever designated for infrastructure?
Of course not. And it also wasn't.
That's what you.
It wasn't designated sales tax at all. That's the problem. You're treating it like a designated sales tax. It wasn't. It's a general sales tax.
Joe, if you like to make it.
If you really wanted, if you really wanted to go with, with the voter intent, you, you would, you would just lower the sales tax because it's creating too much money.
Joe.
Well.
If you like to make an appointment and come up and talk to us about it, we'd be more than happy to do that.
Well, and I don't think that's the right thing to do when we're generating the money within Atchison County. We should be using it in Atchison County, which is what our proposal was. Everyone pay their fair share based on the apportion rate and then you get, keep, you don't even.
And it's used in the, in the county. It's just used by the city. It's used some of it by the city. There's nothing wrong with that.
I want to address something real quick. You say that we went to the legislature. I never went to the legislature for anything. When I found out that the legislation was picked up again this year, the city had already made their legislative agenda. The number one thing on their, your legislative agenda was to defeat this legislation before I even knew that there was a bill coming back this year. So I think that's a false argument.
So you didn't pass a resolution supporting the legislation?
But much afterwards, much af, I mean, it's.
And that matters, that matters how?
Excuse me?
How does that matter? I mean, it's, it's still asking for legislation.
The Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn at four thirty-two P M.
Also move.
I have a second. Second. Any further discussion?
I would like to have further discussion in the future, Joe, but I, I still stand strong with, with my beliefs and how we need to work together. So.
We're always open to this. I'm always open to discussion. I, I just, I, I think.
Are you the city manager, Joe?
Excuse me?
Are you city management?
Absolutely not. I, I am in, I am one of the administrators here. Yes, I'm an executive.
You're not the city manager.
Correct.
Thank you.
But I am a resident.
If I was saying, all right.
All right.
All right. Passes. Did you say hi or?
Hi.
We are.